...the decriminalization of marijuana in the city of Lakeland. So Commissioner Proctor, since you asked, would you mind kind of hitting off the discussion?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate my colleagues agreeing to have a workshop. I know there's been a push for a lot of policy moves and policy decisions for this body, so I appreciate the opportunity. Several months ago, there was a New York Journal article about decriminalization of marijuana by the city of Miami. And I forwarded that article to Tim and said, you know, hey, what are your thoughts on, what are your thoughts? And then, you know, obviously, Tim's busy and it was a time that went by, not too much longer, but then there was another city that was in the headlines, another city. And so I consider our community, I think we're a regional leader. I think we are on the forefront of being a progressive city, meaning we're moving forward to address the needs that are ever-changing within our constituencies. And so I wanted to have a conversation. There's a lot of information on both sides of the issue, and I think it's healthy that we take a look at it, because at some point, we're going to have to answer it to our constituents. There's going to be a push, one way or the other, by the people that work for us and that we work for. And I think it's incumbent upon us to have the information available to ourselves and then to really advocate ourselves on the issue that is really sweeping across the country. And it's not necessarily decriminalization. Most communities, it's legalization. And so I think there's a difference, and I would hope that folks that are out there to know that we're not trying to make things legal. I know I'm not, that's not the avenue that I'm pursuing, but there are folks that have contacted me, which I'm sure have contacted many of you, saying, just legalize it and move forward, but that's not where we are at this point. I mean, we're at the information stage, we're at the information gathering stage. There are a lot of folks in our community that I respect, that work with organizations that deter youth from the things that are not necessarily good for them. There are law enforcement folks that I deeply respect, that have an opinion on, that face the issue every day. And then there are folks that we know, that are professionals, that are in our circles of friends, in our neighborhood groups, in our community, that have been affected by the consequences of being caught with something of misdemeanor nature. The long-term effects of that, I think, need to really be discussed. So that's why we're here, and I appreciate my colleagues entertaining the idea of having a conversation. I think it's going to be an enlightening conversation. I think we all come with our own perspectives and experiences. As an educator, you know, I deal with it on a daily basis, as far as kids, you know, trying to coach kids on making the right decisions. As we know, we all were kids once, and we did always make the right decision. And so times are a little bit different, the consequences are a little different. There's a lot of things that we try to encourage for our community, be high-skill, high-wage. We try to, we pride ourselves on being business-friendly, and there are some things that may deter our workforce from being able to be competitive in the market. There are things that can prohibit our young folks from getting college scholarships, from being accepted to college, to be admitted to the military. And so as long as we're aware of what those consequences are and how it affects the long-term quality of life of all of our community, then we can move forward. But until then, I think it's a worthy conversation, and I appreciate everyone's opportunity to listen to the experts and the folks who are there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Who would like to go next? Commissioner Walker?
Mr. Mayor, and thank you, I guess, to all colleagues for making sure that we could discuss this and give the calls and weigh the issues out, I guess, as best we can, even to determine whether we should move forward with a public hearing, those kinds of things, to bring about change in our city ordinances and that kind of thing. As I, you know, just thought, and I say this because people know my practice and things, so at the beginning, they're going to ask, does that happen? As I did that, we shared some processes. The first thing that came to my mind was, you know, respecting the authority of law enforcement and what they may tell me. And I wanted to hear that. I want to hear from my law enforcement person, who was my chief of police, to say, what do you think about this idea? What do you think about this? Especially so when change would may affect, well, affect, whoever may go, if it goes anywhere at all. I want to hear what has gotten done, especially with the attorney's office there. I saw a little bird in, I was in Delaware, I was having to contact the public what was going on at the time, but I saw some things are coming about. It comes to this, you listen to my colleagues, and I thought, I said the same thing, we got to wait to step out, close their cars, before we can, we see the same way we're going to move forward or not. Now, I thought about some things about the strengths. I thought about it because as a young man growing up, you know, you always had, there were strengths. And I do know, I was here and was a contemporary teacher myself, as well as a young folk coming into my presence, you know, there are strengths, and when the strengths are lessened, longer it is going to be. So I have a concern about that. If we take away from the strengths, what may be? On the other hand, longer it is that come out, you know, these situations. I thought about it as being a city, but it's county, of municipal municipalities. I thought about a sheriff that has government authorities that, and in a covered area, what kind of effect that may have if we even do something like this, and someone, boom, gets out of our jurisdiction area, and boom, get clipped. You know, you still got a situation to think about, you know? We're out on a research, I said, almost, if this should happen, and if government, this government's not going that way, the county's not going that way, you know, what kind of situation ever caused, people's citizens, you know, what may happen? Cause and effect, I thought about young people, you know, and where we mentoring young folks and continue to tell them what might, which way to go, which we got to go, and what you want to do with, what you want to forward, what kind of, I think, outcome it would have on young people, and I think all, after a resident's order, after a resident's time. And he's questioning, that's what you think, and, you know, what, where, where he's going to go. So I think it's important we have this discussion, because there's some other pros and cons about it all, you know, as we move forward, and what kind of effect it would have on Lakeland. And on Lakeland being this single island to itself, if, again, if this should go that way, and we've got the government, this for government, and our state, county, especially the county, sheriff, department, and overall, who again, you, and I thought, well, you know, judicial-wise, because you got a Lakeland address, maybe it's not a city that's in Lakeland. You don't, you don't live in a city that's in Lakeland, because you got a Lakeland address. So boom, you go outside, the city Lakeland is in Lakeland, then what could happen? Or what may happen? So I, those kinds of things that, you know, I want to hear, among the guests, about authorities, when it comes to law enforcement, I, you know, those progressives tell me what you think about it, what, what outcomes they call, is made calls to help or not help, I'll say it overall. I often times say, and I pretend to say, this is not Tampa, this is not Lakeland, this is Lakeland. Lakeland, I think, is unique in some situations where the law, the bigger voice, and that's the bigger voice in the right, that's where I'm at. I'm unique, I say, I am Lakeland, and that's the thing that's coming. Being in Lakeland, the Tampa's happening, all that, no, that's, no, I love Lakeland.
Commissioner Walker?
I do have specific questions, like Commissioner Walker, my first question is to your city attorney. If we were to decriminalize recreational or small amounts of marijuana, and the county, and I assume the district court, the zero towns, instead of cities, of crime, how does that work? We would find somebody and not even report it to the state's attorney? Do we have the authority as a municipality to do that?
Well, let me just speak to you about what I've learned in researching this in response to Commissioner Proctor's questions to me. And I emphasize that I can't deal in specifics, because you don't have anything specifically in front of you to decide. But one thing, one thing that I think you should start from is that if we do not decriminalize marijuana, that's a state law decision, a separate adjudication process that would not result in a conviction and result in a civil fine or penalty. So maybe it's back to the impact to discussion, you know, whether it makes any difference what the name is, but it really is a function of that process, so I think it's just a different adjudication act.
And we would adjudicate it as a civil case rather than a criminal case, therefore, we'd still go through the state's attorney on a civil adjudication?
Not necessarily. You create, it's almost like analogous to a red light camera thing, you create a legal process or a code enforcement for violation, where you have an administrative process that hears appeals from those.
Like littering?
I think that's covered in our, in our, we will code enforcement process.
Now, thank you, Tim. My next question is to Chief Giddens, and if one of our officers pulls over a minor driving a car, and in that car, a boy or girl has a six-pack of beer open, what is the offense we would charge that minor for? And if that same boy or girl had a small bag of marijuana, what would be the action taken by the company?
The two would be, you would have a possession of alcoholic beverage by a person less than 21 years of age, and the other would be you would have a criminal possession of marijuana.
But the, the six-pack of beer is not a criminal offense?
Yes, it is.
It is a criminal offense, so that's.
Possession of alcoholic beverage by a person less than 21.
So both offenses right now are treated as a criminal act?
That's correct, because of the age of the individual.
Of the age.
But possession of marijuana will be criminal across the board, regardless of age.
So if this, if the boy or girl's 18 years old or 21, then the open container was still prized, is that a criminal act?
That would just be a citation for having an open container on mobile.
And if he had a bag of marijuana, what would that be?
That would still be a criminal offense.
So criminal.
And the person, that would be up to the discretion of the officer, and that is where your first discretion begins, right there. The officer has the discretion to make that criminal charge. That officer, if they decide not to make a charge, they can still collect that, and can do a report, and explain the circumstances under which they came to obtain the marijuana from the driver, depending on the circumstances, and that's discretion of officers.
That's entirely up to the officer. Generally speaking, if you find a group of kids in a car or minors, and there's some marijuana in the car, what usually do your officers do?
If you cannot place it on somebody, there's a rule of there's constructive possessions, but that's hard to prove, and that is something that we wrestle with. If you just ride up and there's a joint in the ashtray and there's four people in the car, who does it actually belong to? That, it is very hard to prove that. Generally, that would just be seized.
So generally, you just seize it and go on? Unless it apparently is confiscated or under the influence.
That would be a different investigation. You still can't charge for possession there unless you can smell it coming, emanating from their person off their clothing, or if you see them in possession of it.
How often do we actually put somebody in a car and take them to BARTO for possession of small amounts of marijuana?
Well, that's interesting. We started looking at our statistical data, and back in 2014, we had 233 arrests, 45 were issued NTAs. The total charge was 278. That was about 16% that were issued notice to appear. But that total has gone up every year since 2014. I didn't go back further than 2014. In 2015, those arrests dropped, they actually increased to 350, but we saw an increase of 130 NTAs being.
NTAs.
NTAs, notice to appear. That is a move of a fiscal arrest. We give you a notice to appear, which we just give you a court date, you show up in court.
So that means you're going for a judge on a criminal charge.
Right. It's not a fiscal arrest that night. You're not going to jail, you're not going to have to bond out. That went up 37%. Thus far this year, we're at 49%, we're almost equal on the number of NTAs to arrests. But remember, that discretion that that officer has depends on the circumstances that are going on when they come across the person in possession of marijuana. You know, where are they located? What is the activity that they're involved in? All those things will make an officer decide. And that's also a part that I want you to think about, that as you extrapolate this over years, you can't, you can have a bias there, but you don't ever get the context, if you understand what I'm saying. Certain segments of your community, there might be a bias because of the activity that they're involved in when you come across people in possession of marijuana. And those are things that concern us when you're looked at over time.
Can you conclude, though, with these data, that the use of recreational marijuana is on the increase in our community?
Yes, sir.
You cannot conclude that.
I have anecdotal examples, and I'm sure that you're going to have people that are going to be both pro and con on that, but to say that it's on the rise, I don't think, I don't have a statistical data to show that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Reed, did you have your answer?
I did, thank you. The honest question, but for silver, what I had a question, also, I may want to get into the jurisdiction component. I just wondered what would happen if they caught a small amount? What constitutes a small amount versus a large amount? Is there, obviously, if I'm like hearing what the other cities around us are doing that have passed some type of ordinance? Is there a fee structure, first offense, second offense, third offense? If there's parental contact, the person may be under the 18, age of 18, 21, maybe that might be, and then if we address the driving under the influence and stuff like that. So those are, makes me some ideas, some thoughts that I would like to hear in our next discussion.
I believe in this one. Chief, what is the threshold for?
20 grand.
20 grand?
If you have. You're in possession of 20 or less, then you're, you're in a misdemeanor amount. 20 or more, then that becomes a felony amount.
What is 20 grand?
It'd be hard to show you, but it's 20 grand, I don't know. And the thing is, we actually, if you get like maybe three or four bags, you know, you have to take it out of the bags, and you have to weigh it, because you can't weigh it, then the bag is, it comes, and we have to take them back to the station, and we have to weigh it, and then the station on a certified scale to ensure, because you don't want to be close on that. You don't want to charge somebody with a felony, something down the bar tone, that gets you 19.8 grands, and you didn't have a felony charge. So there's, it's, it can be, so what I'm saying for the officers to go back and, like, if you just get one bag, a done bag, then you know you're underneath it, that's going to be either an NTA or an arrest, as it stands right now.
Before, if you have a question, your problem, your first time around, before we.
I am here to learn, and this is what I was thinking about, and from the experts, and then I'll.
Picking back again, what I said about jurisdiction, here, Commissioner Reed asked about jurisdiction. I have a question about jurisdiction. Again, you move outside of Lakeland. Jurisdiction, what happens?
Well, it depends on, right now, it would be an arrestable offense in the county, just like it is in the city.
Yeah, but again, because Lakeland address, that's the story, I want to make sure that we understand too. You got a Lakeland address, that means you live in Lakeland.
Yes.
Everybody has a Lakeland address when they're in Lakeland, and so if it happens, and you are, you know, ticketed or, you know, we got the situation that's, what you're moving to, there where the jurisdiction line is wrong, and you can get arrested, if I hear correctly, I said, right across the street, almost, as I'm scared as well, bear for me, look where I'm walking. And if it happens, what happens?
Well, you could, if people come into the city just to smoke marijuana. I don't want to make that stretch, but that's what you can describe.
Is a specific location crime, but that is the scythe of the offense, and that determines jurisdiction.
Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the opportunity for all my colleagues and experts, that are very important. I have about three pages of questions, and so what I'd like to do is just, if I go through them, I know, Tony, there's some information I'm going to like to request through your office, through the state attorney's office, you know, or attorney's office, to through the law enforcement division. So as I go through these, these are just questions that I have had myself, along with some questions from folks in the community, as well as questions that are on both sides of the issue. So I think once we, I think today's initial start, I think, is important, but a lot of the questions that Commissioner Walker's asking, that Commissioner Reed's asking, that Mr. Selby's asking, probably need to come back to us with some more concrete answers. So this preliminary meeting, I think, is important, just to get the questions out there. So if you'll bear with me, I just, I didn't write them in any particular order, but we'll go through them and may address some of my question, the questions my colleagues have. And as far as, I think, Chief, you answered it, one of my questions was how many arrests are made in Lakeland every year for misdemeanor marijuana possession? And I believe you, you've answered that as far as the arrests and the NTAs. I think, so I think that one's pretty much answered, as well as your statement, which I appreciate, because I couldn't find any statistics that show marijuana uses on the rise. I think it's, the information I found is that it's been consistent over the quite last decade. A question that I think that we have for our state attorney friends is, what is the cost to the taxpayers to hold a court hearing and charge those individuals? I think that is really some of the important aspects of freeing up our judicial system and removing some of those less, lesser offenses. And at the end of the day, I hope some of these communities that have legalized or decriminalized it, have taken the taxpayer portion. What's the benefits to the taxpayer? I mean, I don't want to have this conversation, because I think people should be able to walk around with weed in their pocket. I mean, I'd like to have the conversation to say, what is the benefits to our community and our taxpayers, at the end of the day? I think that's what a lot of us, the question a lot of us ask ourselves when we go through policy decisions. So that question would be, what is the cost to taxpayers to hold a court hearing for someone that's been charged for misdemeanor possession? Another comment or a question for our state attorney friends is, what is the recidivism rate of misdemeanor marijuana offenders? I think that's important, because when I had an opportunity to talk to the chief, there are, and Chief described it, which I think is a great way to describe, there are off-ramps for folks that are charged, first-time offenders, that there's diversion programs available through our state attorney's office and the legal system. But my, my question really addresses, are the off-ramps effective? That are the off-ramps working? Or is it just revolving going for generative revenue for the state attorney's office? Chief, there may be a question for you, as far as, how many DUI tickets have been written solely for marijuana in the past five years? And so I know there's a lot of nuance to that question, as far as how do you recognize an individual that's under the influence of narcotics instead of alcohol, as far as our drug recognition experts that you explained to me, and I appreciate that. So if we can get that number, I don't think it's going to be very high, just because of the nuances that it pertains to, but I'd like to at least have that, that information. In regards to that, Chief, how many times do we dispatch specially-trained drug recognition officers to a scene? I think that probably goes hand in hand with the DUI ticketing process for folks under the influence of narcotics, as far as driving. One of the demographic breakdown, and I guess this would be a state attorney office question, Tony, what are the demographic breakdown of those sentenced for marijuana possession? And so I think that, that kind of is important as well, because we're not allowed to know that some of the statistics show the disparity, discouraging differences of sentencing versus not sentencing.
What are you reading, Tom, when you buy that?
As far as, how many folks have walked in the system being charged with possession? And then how many of those convictions? Mister, misdemeanor, felony, there's, you have no offense, but misdemeanor is, what percentage of those convicted were white, or, and other, at what, and at what rate, as far as compared to the number charged? Leave it for a percentage.
Trust me, I have to, in addition to that, I think, with the ages group, because there's this comment about being a gateway drug, and it seems to me that ages are all the measures that go with gateway.
That's a good idea, okay. And then, as far as the process, and maybe the chief can answer this, but what's the typical process does a marijuana, does a charge, an individual being charged with marijuana go through? What does, what do, what does the process look like for someone that's charged? Whether it be a rest or an NTA, what's the process? I mean, I don't know what the process is, and at what point do they get the opportunity to off-ramp, and at what cost?
So you want to close your mouth?
Sure. And then, I guess, and I don't know if there are independent groups out there, what's the financial burden of someone that's caught with marijuana possession? What does that process look like as far as paying, you know, to the diversion program, paying court costs, paying drug rehabilitation programs, those types of things? What is the financial impact to those folks that have been charged with marijuana, small amount marijuana possession? And are there, are there any concrete data or studies that identify marijuana as a gateway drug? I think, well, I guess, add an age, that's going to be kind of interesting, but I couldn't find any hard, concrete statistics or studies that show that marijuana is a gateway drug. And so I know we have some folks in the community that are, that are, work closely with deterring our youth from the, from the use of alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, so maybe that's a question for some of those folks. As, as well as, what is the percentage of school-aged children that are using, or admitted to using, surveyed, the use of alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, more, more specifically marijuana? So maybe if anybody else in the audience would interact with lies, maybe that's something we can reach out there for at a later date. And then something else for our state attorney friends, what are the, what are the incarceration rates of these convicted of misdemeanor possession? I think that, I think that's the same as the question I just previously asked you. Here's a legal question for you, Tim, or the chief. Does minimizing the penalty for possession prohibit law enforcement from having probable cause to search the vehicle or search the person? Does making a civil citation rather than a criminal citation for an arrest prohibit law enforcement from being able to have probable cause to search the rest of the vehicle, the rest of their being? I think that's kind of important as well. Because if we take that tool away from our law enforcement, I think we open ourselves to, not only the officer, but the community, which we know.
I'm not sure that I can answer that as a guessing at question. I mean, probable cause will support a search of a vehicle. So if you are referring specifically to a possession offense, then if, if it was plainly visible from outside a vehicle and the vehicle was stopped, then would that constitute probable cause? I think it would, that would give you authority to search the vehicle. But that's, that's a, that's a difficult question for you to answer.
Okay. Well, and we can get back to that at a later time, but I think that's probably really one, part of one of the most important questions to whether we're going to decriminalize it or even consider it. If it takes the law enforcement building from our law enforcement approach, because we decriminalized a small portion of some of those criminals, that, that would have been a hard decision to not move forward, if that prohibits them from moving forward and making sure that they can do their job effectively. So if we can get the, a really.
That's a good question, and it's an excellent question, and I'll have to ponder back, see what the experts say.
All right. Chief, as far as, what is the typical process of a marijuana possession investigation? So can you walk me through the process? You obviously have to, normally pull somebody over, I'm assuming, or, I think it's happened anyway, but give me, give me a normal process, what someone would do.
Just a normal arrest process, which we do?
Yes.
Walking through a park, and you smell marijuana, and then you look over and you see a guy obviously smoking a marijuana cigarette, or a blunt, or a joint? You would walk over, depending on what their activity is. If you can ascertain that there's a little bit of joint, you take him into custody, because of your ability to recognize that as an illegal substance. You would obtain the evidence, more than likely, you would place the person under arrest, you'd do a proper search, explain to them what's going on, and then you would make the decision whether or not you're going to write a notice to appear, if you're going to do a physical arrest. And that depends on the circumstances that the officer would find. If you do a notice to appear, that can be done right there on the scene, the person has the. has the opportunity to agree to show up at a court, court date, about three or four weeks in advance, they get a piece of paper, you, they would move on their way without a fiscal arrest, or they would be released on their own recognizance at that point. If you do the arrest, then the person is taken into custody, would be brought down to the police department, they would be booked in, an arrest affidavit would be completed, and then they would be transported to BARTO, and then they would be given the opportunity to first appearance and be able to bond out, and they would go through that process.
Okay. Because some of the arguments to decriminalize it is it will save law enforcement time and resources to process those that are, that are caught, but your, your explanation is why I asked the question about...
But if you're going to issue, if you were to issue them a citation, a non-criminal citation, then it would be the same thing, you would still have to issue them the citation, they would still have the opportunity to go, whatever that process looks like, but we would still have to take the evidence and package it and place it in evidence in the event that they fight that later in court.
So the only time saved on law enforcement is the discretion of the officer, which is their own discretion, there's no one way or the other, they, there's no set rules for them to follow, they can make their own judgment, on which I fully support, that the only time saved is the transport. Could you still have to process the paperwork and the paraphernalia and the drugs that were collected?
Sometimes, because of the circumstances, you might find other things upon that search of that person that would want you to transport, and so it's not always just because of the possession of marijuana, it's what comes along with that activity that may lead you to want to transport.
Okay. Okay. And so, so really, my question was for the time, as far as taxpayer savings, can we be more effective and productive if we're not wasting time, is not the right word, by the way, transporting people on small amounts of marijuana charges? So, and then I appreciate the statistics where it's trending to where more and more of our processes, our NTAs, rather than arrests, I appreciate that information. And, Tim, does reducing the penalty violate court rulings?
I don't think so, and that's an equitable answer, because, number one, I don't have anything specific for you. In, in my mind, in my analysis of this, we started talking about it, is that, that the creation of the criminal offense is a state law, a state statute creature. And so it's, there's, there is clearly a question as to whether state law has preempted a local government's ability to, to legislate in this area. I think if you were to decide to, to say that marijuana was no longer a crime, or that possession was no longer a crime, I think that the courts would say that that has been preempted by state law, different than you could not determine that, you know, armed robbery was no longer a crime. Those are, those are creatures of state law, and so there's at least a legitimate argument that the state has preempted your ability to do that, or I think they have preempted your ability to do that. But what we're talking about is the adjudication. And so I do think that you have discretion and the attitude to create an alternative adjudication process. Now, I hasten to add that I have not reached that as a, as a legal conclusion to advise you, because, because I didn't really have anything to base it on, because I didn't have anything in front of me to determine, but at least that is the thought process, that, yes, you do have that, that I think you probably have authority. Does that conflict with, with, you know, existing decisions? There, again, I haven't, I haven't absolutely researched that, to that extent.
Okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll, yeah, that's your last question. And then, lastly, some of my research, some of my colleagues, and, you know, you're working, I'm in, I'm in a difficult position, you know, I'm an educator, and then also a city leader, and there are, you know, there are, there's a balance that I'm trying to, to walk. And one of the issues that I, I face in my, my other real job is that I deal with, with our young people every day, and there are circumstances surrounding each one, they're all different, and I worry that sometimes the, the decisions that they make aren't always, they're obviously not the best, but sometimes our society treats them as something that, that really should be reconsidered, and what I'm talking about is just a minor charge, and the chief will say, you know, there's off-ramps, which I appreciate, but you know, what happens if they, they get off the off-ramp, then they get back on the off-ramp, and then get back on, on the roadway? I'm afraid of the long-term effects of what a minor possession charge carries. And, and as a community, we need to look at the quality of life and the economic stability of our community, and that, and that requires, and we've heard it a number of times by our economic folks, of having a, a workforce that is, is educated and, and ready to step into those roles as people retire. And so I did some research on, you know, does, does a small amount of, does a misdemeanor, I can say a small amount, but twenty grand, if you look at twenty grand, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's not a little baggy, but does a, a misdemeanor drug charge prohibit our young people from having the opportunity to advance themselves, to be productive members of society, when higher education is concerned? And some of the information that I found are that if you have a, a, a drug charge, that you're ineligible for financial aid. That is, as we know, not many, not many of our, our young people can write checks, or parents of those young people can write checks, for folks just to go straight to college without coming, you know, seeking some type of financial aid. And I also found what was interesting, that those incarcerated can't get grant or loans to further their education while they're, you know, while they're incarcerated, and so that's, that was kind of something that was interesting as well. Sixty percent of colleges consider run background checks and criminal histories on the applicants, and that is alarming, because, you know, eliminating a certain segment of our, our young people from having the opportunity to advance themselves really is worrisome. As far as employment, I don't know if the chamber president said it in the audience, but maybe we can reach out to him to find out how many of their business members or their business partners, well, higher folks have drug convictions, in misdemeanor nature. I think that's kind of interesting, that we can maybe involve the chamber, to maybe see, reach out to their folks and see what the likelihood of them employing someone that has a misdemeanor drug charge. And then, lastly, military service, one of those professions that, there's, there's no greater calling to service to your, to your, your community than, than serving in the military. And just the research I've, I've done, and I've had an opportunity to talk to some of our local recruiters, but does any drug charge disqualify you from applying for military service? I, I think, I, I mean, I looked up the answer, but, you know, I'd like to hear from the horses' mouth, as far as those individuals that would like to serve our, our military, the highest form of service, our community are ineligible to be considered for military service.